So as a preliminary matter, this is Larry Murphy, Chair of the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Peter Pecos?
Yes.
Woody Knight?
Yes.
Mary Stone?
Yes.
And I'll note George Morse will not be with us tonight. Town staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Martha Taylor, Planning Director?
Yes.
Kristen Grubbs, Assistant Town Planner?
Yes.
And for anticipated speakers, please respond in the affirmative. Steve Sawyer, GM, GM two associates?
Yep.
And Gage Foley?
I don't, I don't see him on. He's probably tending to the onions.
Okay, all right. So the, this September twentieth, twenty twenty-three open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Chapter Two of the Acts of twenty twenty-three, which extends the Governor's March twelfth, twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty until March thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. This order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. It allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded to the public, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board has convened via, via video conference, via Zoom, as posted on the planning board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website and which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to H T T P colon backslash backslash zoom dot U S in entering meeting ID number eight, three, two, seven, one, four, one, three, zero, five, six, pass code one, zero, eight, seven, nine, zero, or by calling one, nine, two, nine, two, zero, five, six, zero, nine, nine, U S, New York, in entering the meeting ID number and pass code when prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video and/or telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcast live through local access cable channel nine on Zoom and at W W W dot T N C T V dot org. And the recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak and if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you have been called. The meeting ground rules, before we turn to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As Chair, I will introduce speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer using your mute button or on your phone, a star six to toggle mute or unmute when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones with tablets and cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through me, taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. For public comment, there will be an opportunity for public comment and questions during public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and/or ask questions as follows. I will seek questions and comments through the Zoom hand function. For video conference participants to raise your hand, hover over the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the gray hand that appears. Please ensure your name is fully incorrectly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more function next to your name. For telephone participants to raise your hand in a Zoom meeting, hit star nine on your phone keypad. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click on the raise hand function. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address and then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant, participant, or his or her representatives the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. I will then continue down the list of those in the raised hand column and again afford the participant, applicant, or representative an opportunity to speak. Should there be a physical or electronic submittal of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record and again, the participant, applicant, or representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not yet been addressed. And finally note that each vote taken at this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. So it's seven oh five now. We do have several public hearings on the agenda, but those are posted for seven fifteen. So why don't we start then with liaison and meeting reports? Martha, anything from the select board?
Uh, no, not this week. The last meeting they had was on, on August twenty-second, so that was reported on at the last meeting.
Okay, thank you, Martha. For the Z B A, they actually met last week and was a continued public hearing on the matter at one thirty-four Northern Boulevard, which I previously reported on. They, that was a petition to uh, change your commercial use to residential and to increase the height of the building and the Z B A denied that petition at their last meeting. And I don't know what's coming up in the future. I haven't, haven't seen the, they won't, won't meet again until October. That's all I have for the Z B A. Anything for conservation, Woody?
Um, we met last night. We had an executive session on Cricket Lane. We had a certificate of compliance for Governor Dama's dock. And let's see what else pertain to us. They had a few tree things. The seven marsh out, which we, we broke off, they came before us. They had a uh, to demolish the existing structure that was there, which falls within the perimeter of the Paca River. And then the only other thing that really pertain to us was a I'm sorry, oh, on Main Street, three Main Street, there was another one that came before us and they, it was a discussion on the driveway and septic system and associated site work for that. That was right on the timeline there. Other than that, it was a, it was a busy meeting, but that's what pertain to us, so.
Very good. Thanks, Woody. Martha, anything for M V P C?
Um, M V P C, the Commissioners' meetings are starting up again. The first one will be tomorrow for kind of the fall through the rest of the fiscal year. And the planners' meeting is going to be on September twenty-eighth. There are a couple of other meetings which I'll report on now. Kristen and I have been involved in the Hazard Mitigation Plan Update meetings and we had a meeting last week on the thirteenth. We're identifying vulnerabilities in town and critical infrastructure. So this is an ongoing process. It will be going through the end of the next fiscal year and has, um, you know, includes from Newberry, our, our fire chief, our police chief and D P W director, health director, some other kind of critical people dealing with hazard issues. Um, the other kickoff meeting that I went to is for a kind of a new planning process that they're starting called M B Vision Zero, which is focused on transportation and specifically to reduce the number of fatalities and serious crashes in the Merrimack Valley region down to, to zero. So, um, you'll be hearing more about that going forward. And if you're interested, I can send you some links to, to both of those, actually.
Thank you, Martha. Next item on the agenda, Martha, is the Planning Director's Report. You've got a few minutes. Do you want to do that?
Um, sure. Um, I've actually got a bunch of project updates here. So sixty-eight Green Street, we talked previously about the, the stormwater runoff issue on, on the abutting property at seventy Green Street and also some issues down at the end of the new road. And we had a meeting, Sam, Kristen and I and Joe Sirwad can met with T J Melvin from Millennium to review a revised plan. We had some questions and some suggested revisions came out of that, so he's going to be revising the plan and you know, we've alerted Mike De Santos to make sure that when the work is done, Joe, Joe and I will review it when the work is done to make sure that T J and Joe are on site to actually help coordinate that. It'll be creating some swales and berms and doing some regrading and directing some of the uh, downspout, the roof drainage into, into the ground. Uh, eighty-four Boston Road, I received a call today from Kevin Whitney. He would like a a modification, uh, which will be coming before the board to change from granite curbing to to basically Cape Cod burn asphalt curbing. So he'll be submitting that formally along with a sketch and an updated schedule. Uh, he plans to get the binder down this fall, but we'll finish the landscaping and, and the top goat next spring. Uh, three Newbury Port Turnpike. We've also received a question from T J Melvin from Millennium. Apparently the owner would like to add three E V charging stations with associated parking spaces. Um, so that also will be, be coming before the board. That'll be an increase in impervious surface. I think the board will need to make a determination of whether this is minor or major and take it from there. So that may be on the next agenda. One oh five High Road, Steve may actually be able to speak about this, but the report from Joe is that the swell on the southern boundary is going to be going in, but there's been some, some tree removal and some other trees that have been identified that need to be removed. So Steve will be coming before the board at some point to discuss that. John Collin Tony has stopped by to give an update on the schedule for the one oh eight Main Street project. And he is now looking at starting construction next spring, next March. As you recall, he did go in and do some tree, tree removal and put in a you know, stabilized construction entrance and then hasn't done any work since then. So that's his goal now is to finish up, I think, the, the, um, project down on Larkin Road, Parish Road, and then come back in the spring. The Governor's Academy, the, what we knew as the Presby is now the A C R C is, is complete. There's actually going to be a dedication on October sixth for that. And if there's time, Kristen has had a discussion with some people about a new initiative called Housing Choice. It's kind of a local Newbury Port, Newbury and surrounding towns. So, um, if you can give a report on that.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thanks.
Got a couple of minutes. Yeah, so some Newbury residents who've been interested in affordable housing issues, um, reached out to me to share that this initiative was starting up, um, being led by the Y W C A in Newbury Port. They receive, they applied for and received a grant from CHAPA, the Citizens Housing and Planning Association um, for Massachusetts to establish this community engagement coalition. So it's being called the Housing Choice Coalition. I think there's been some articles recently in the Newbury Port Daily News about it. But the mission of the coalition is to support housing equity and justice in the greater Newbury Port area. So they're sort of organizing on a Facebook page right now, talking with partners, seeing who's interested in being a part of the coalition. Welcome to everyone. They're going to have a public kickoff meeting later this fall, which I'll share more information about. And, you know, essentially their intention is to galvanize support for a lot of the affordable housing initiatives that the communities are underway with, not just M B T A zoning, but you know, other inclusionary zoning that we've been talking about in Newbury and just in general to sort of have a space where people can gather and support the initiatives that are underway in the region. So I can, um, I'll, I can send some links to the planning board and you might also be hearing from some of the members of the coalition.
Great. Thank you, Kristen. Uh, your timing is perfect because it's now seven fifteen, so we can get into the public hearings. So the first item on the agenda for public hearings is we have concurrent public hearings. And these are continuances. The one seventy Orchard Street map, R twenty lot forty-three A, the owner applicant, the estate of Louis Bulgaris, care of Diane Yurkovich, continued from six, nine, twenty-three, and the public hearing for definitive subdivision plan application for Fields Way at one seventy Orchard Street. In common driveway special permit application for common driveway serving two lots um, as proposed fieldways, up fieldways subdivision at one seventy Orchard Street. We do have a request for continuance. Only, we only have four members of the board who are eligible to vote on this because uh, Mary was an associate member when this first came before the board and missed a couple of the public hearing sessions. Uh, and George Morse is not with us tonight. Uh, and as you all know, at least for the public hearing, excuse me, for the, um, special permit, uh, it requires a super majority of four affirmative votes. So, uh, the request has been made to continue, uh, both of these public hearings until October fourth, twenty twenty-three at seven fifteen P M via Zoom. I, uh, we certainly, frankly, it's unclear to me whether or not on the special permit, I can simply declare, uh, the continuance uh, for lack of a quorum of four. Uh, but in any event, we'll need a motion for the subdivision. So I'll take a belt and suspend his approach and invite anyone to make a motion to continue both of these public hearings, uh, until October fourth, twenty twenty-three at seven fifteen P M.
So moved.
Thank you, Peter. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Woody, thank you. And, uh, again, there are only three voting members present, so, um, I'll ask Peter, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Uh, Woody, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
And I vote on the motion as well. So those are both continued until, uh, October fourth. Uh, our October fourth meeting at seven fifteen P M via Zoom. Uh, the next item on the agenda for public hearings is seven Bittersweet Lane, map U oh nine lot twenty-one B, common driveway special permit application owner David W Foley Senior and Nancy J Foley, applicant Gage Foley, continued from nine, six, twenty-three. Uh, and again, I want to note that, um, oh, we do have four eligible voting members present, but George Morse again is not present. And Martha, correct me if I'm wrong, but George has missed one session of the public hearing on this. Is that correct?
I believe he's actually missed two.
Oh, he has, then he's, um, not eligible to vote in any case going forward.
I, I believe in the case. He, he missed the, he missed the last one and I think he also missed the August sixteenth. I'll, I'll verify that.
Did I, August sixteenth, um, didn't we just continue that?
Oh, maybe we did. Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Yeah. The, the reason I'm mentioning this is for the applicant's benefit. Um, is, is if we go forward tonight and uh, open the public hearing and, and take testimony, deliberate on this, this will certainly be George's second uh, meeting that he's missed, uh, and he would not be eligible to go forward, to vote in, in the future. And so you'd require, um, a unanimous vote of the remaining four members. So it's, it's customary to give the applicant, uh, the option of continuing it or going forward. Um, and before I ask you what you want to do with that, I think it might be worthy of, or just sort of recapping where we are right now because we're in, I kind of an unusual situation. So, um, prior to, um, our last public hearing, the applicant submitted revised plans, uh, a draft of a common driveway and utility easement and an easement plan, and at the same time submitted a letter requesting that the board consider allowing the existing common driveway to remain at twelve feet uh, wide or to be widened to fourteen foot maximum instead of the required sixteen feet under the bylaw. The board also received a second review letter from the board's repair view engineer, Joe Sawetka. At the nine, six session of the public hearing, the board reviewed the required findings based on the current design of the plan submitted. Uh, planning director did reach out to town council for guidance on whether the board has the authority to allow a reduction in the required width of the common driveway. And, and town council's response was that, uh, the bylaw in fact does not give the planning board the authority to waive any of the stated common driveway specifications. And per town council, um, that means any deviation from the required specifications, excuse me, will require a variance from the Z B A. And, um, there are several, um, item or, or several provisions on the plan that don't meet with, strictly speaking, with the, the, uh, with the requirements of the bylaw. And let me, let me just explain for the record. The problem here is, is we're used to granting waivers in an appropriate case. The problem in this particular case is these requirements are not within our regulations. They're in the bylaw and town council has advised us that we don't have the authority to waive the minimum sixteen foot width. We don't have the authority to waive the requirement regarding crowning of the driveway. And we don't have the authority to waive the acute, the requirements to the acute angle at the intersection of the driveway. And town council suggested that, that, that the applicant might, if, if wanted, uh, any deviations from those requirements, uh, it would require a variance from the Z B A. I may be repeating myself on that. So I'll turn to the applicant now. How do you want to proceed with this?
Um, I, I don't know. I guess Gage would. I, I guess at this point where, you know, we're not going to be, our, the, we won't be until the November the first, I guess, the November sixth, I think, with the meeting is in November for our variance, so. We, you couldn't act until that happens. Um, and I guess at this point, that always helped, I, you know, Gage, I would say it's always good to have, granted, I don't think this is a very controversial project. But say we lose another, you know, if for any reason there's a member not there, it's always good to have more voting members in my opinion. So I, we're really, we're at the mercy of the zoning board right now. I just say we'd, we'd look to continue so we could try and get, um, get George back in. Not engaged. I don't know if you agree, um, unfortunately.
Yeah, that's like, makes sense to me. As much as I'd love for all of these things to, uh, run concurrently, it, it doesn't sound like that makes sense. So, uh, here we are.
Yeah, and I guess one thing we could do is we'd be, we could meet, you know, if we want to discuss some of the technical items regarding what will be before the board, I guess, no, we won't be there. I guess, no, we, we have October. So if you wanted a brief, if we wanted to have a hearing, a brief discussion of the board's opinion on any relief on roadway width, if there was any position that we should be asking relief from the zoning board, we could just push it to the next meeting and discuss it then.
Yeah, I mean, you, you might, you might want to, I'd suggest you might want some, at least to straw poll from the planning board members as to whether or not they would support in these waivers. Um, again, it, it comes back to the, if we, if we address that tonight, then we're, we're deliberating and that's going to George out. If indeed my memory is correct, that he hasn't, that he's only missed one meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, and I, and in fairness, I'll tell you, uh, I don't know when we're going to have George back with us.
Okay, so we're not sure.
Yeah, um, so.
Yeah, okay. I, I don't know, Gage, you know, I guess we could, you know, I guess we could ask for the straw poll tonight or kick it, kick it, kick it to the first October meeting and see if he's available and then ask for it then. Um, I don't, it's, it's not like we're, it'll be, it's not a, it's pretty quick and easy to jump on now when it's remote.
Yeah, um.
But he, I think he's already missed one and he'd been missing, he's missing tonight, whether the board deliberates on that or, or not.
Yeah, if we open the meeting, we, yeah, so.
Yeah, the, the, tonight's continuance has already been opened, so I, I, I think he's not eligible.
Oh, he's not eligible anyway. Okay.
Oh, okay. All right.
All right, so that ship has sailed. All right. All right, then let's, but let's throw it on the table.
And in that case, yeah, I mean, knowing what, you know, what this board's position is, um, would definitely be helpful for us in the process during the variance. Uh, we are still interested in, in in what we submitted for the, the existing driveway here, whether there is any, um, uh, support for that amongst this board because depending whether there's support here would change how we file that variance. So Steve, you're probably a little more well spoken with me, with, uh, than me with that. That thought.
Right, well, let me, let me do this. Again, this is not a binding vote, but let me just go through the criteria from the, from the bylaw and pull the members and see, you know, where, where we might be in agreement and, uh, you know, where, where there might be any sticking point. So the, probably the most controversial one and important one is, is the minimum width. Uh, again, this is out of the, uh, common driveway specification, section ninety-seven, five, D four B of our, uh, zoning bylaw. On item number one, at the minimum width shall be sixteen feet and shall provide adequate access for emergency vehicles. Now, the applicant is proposing something less than sixteen feet. So let me go through the members. Pete, uh, do you have any thoughts on this?
So Steve, just so I understand correctly, our last, my last discussion point was, uh, was it going to be twelve foot with two and two on either side?
No, I think it was, we were going to stay, uh, maintain the twelve. The, the plan was to maintain the twelve with two foot, two foot crushed stone on the left side. Um, we can't really, um, it'd be tough to, um, I guess one thing we could do is around that tree, I guess it would just be crushed stone, so, um, but I, I, the intent was maintain it as is and provide the two foot drainage strip on the left edge as you're driving in.
That'd bring you to fourteen feet.
That'd be fourteen feet.
Assuming that you could count the, the, the crush.
The crushed stone as your travel surface.
So two foot on either side or a total?
On the left, just on the left side.
Just on the left side. Yeah, so I, I, just so you know, I, I really think sixteen's kind of an important number.
He, what did you just say? I'm sorry.
I, I'm sorry, Mary. I'll, I'll, I'll speak closer. I think sixteen's kind of an important number.
So he would like, would, uh, if I understand you, Pete, you, you're not inclined to, to support the waiver.
Right.
Right. Uh, Woody, how about you?
I, I kind of feel the same way, uh, the sixteen feet's important for, uh, emergency vehicles and whatnot, so. So I feel about that. I feel the same way about that.
What, what, Steve, what's, what's the difference, uh, from the, uh, the, the actual length of the common driveway uh, up to the point that, that, um, uh, from bittersweet to, to the point where Gage is proposing his driveway into his unit, into his lot?
Yeah, so Gage's driveway is actually somewhat, it's, it would diverge prior to the end of the, the existing common portion of the driveway. So nineteen bittersweet, I think diverges, you know, nine, uh, the, the, so nineteen diverges off to the right, probably, I don't know, just after, probably like twenty feet after our drive, after the proposed driveway. So this driveway is somewhat.
I, I didn't make myself very clear. What, uh, your, your original plan called for sixteen feet, correct? And what, what is the length of that sixteen foot strip?
Oh, okay. Hold on a sec. Um, it's a hundred and, hold on, let me just open up the PDF. We are at I'm sorry, it's, okay, it's two hundred and seventy feet.
Okay, thanks. Um, Mary, I'm sorry, didn't mean to leave you out. Uh, what, what are your thoughts on, on this way, requested waiver? A variance, I guess, is what, the way to put it.
I, you know, I, I understand the, the emergency vehicles, but it just seems such a small item that, um, I think we should just grant the variance. That would be my bet.
Okay. Um, thank you. Well, you, you can see there's, you know, the board's not unanimous in, in its position on that. And I expect the way this would play out uh, would be if you're before the Z B A for a variance, they would ask what the position of the board is. And I guess I would have to report if I were there. And I'm usually, I'm the liaison to the Z B A. I'd have to, uh, report that there was some, the board's not unanimous in that. And also bearing in mind, you still got to come back after you get your variance, you still got to come back to, to the, uh, to this board, uh, to get approval of the, uh, of the, uh, common driveway special permit. Um, the next item is materials, a minimum of twelve inch compacted gravel base. I think, I don't think that's an issue at all, is it? You wouldn't require, uh, variance from that, would you?
No, for the, for the widening portion, we are providing the, the, the required section.
Okay. And the maximum center line slope fifteen percent? Is that an issue?
Oh, they were well under that. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I guess what I'm trying to, I'm just trying to get to what.
What, yeah, what, what variances we need? What, yeah, what, what variances we need, yeah, okay.
The next item, and this, I think is something that you would need, the driveway shall be crowned, so drainage is not crossing the driveway surface. And it goes on, when drainage must cross the drive, it shall be done in a, in a closed culvert, minimum twelve inch diameter under the road. Drainage for drive and lot shall be controlled onsite or adequate provisions. And easements made for offsite control of drainage. Peter, do you have any thoughts on this, or would you like to hear more from the applicant on it?
Yeah, I'd like to hear a little bit more.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so I guess, you know, what happens is it's, it's constructed as a. As because of the cross slope of the existing topography at the beginning of the road. It's, or no, at the beginning, I'm sorry, at the beginning it is crowned, it is crowned, but as you get down the roadway, there's a. There's a slope from right to left across the property, so the driveway follows that, follows that. Contour of the slope, so there's a slight cross slope. It's very subtle, you know, the cross slopes in this driveway are very subtle, it's. I think only one and a half percent, which is fine, it, it's, it's been draining, you know, as constructed. One thing, it's been there for twenty some odd years and as constructed, there's been no drainage issues or icing or any issues to date. So we're just looking to mimic or maintain the existing cross section of the roadway. And not have to rip the whole thing up and rebuild it.
Okay, no issues.
Okay, Woody.
If that, if it's working now, I don't see any issues.
Mary?
You know, I think crowning is very important, but in this case. I, I don't, I don't think it's necessary, if it's draining, okay, crowning is really, really super important if it's not drained. Sounds to me like it is.
Yeah.
Unanimous in, in supporting that variance. Uh, cause I'll, I'll add my voice to what they said. Uh, the next item is the minimum width of the easement shall be thirty feet. I don't think that's an issue, is it?
Um, well, yeah, we're providing the thirty foot wide easement.
Yeah. In the next item, the acute angle of the intersection of the driveway in the street shall not be less than sixty degrees. I completely understand why you designed it the way you did. Anyway, Pete, do you, you have anything, any comments on this?
No, I don't.
No, Woody?
No, I don't.
Now, Mary?
No, I don't have anything to say.
No, and, and neither do I. This is an unusual situation where I think the current layout is probably better than. What the, what the bylaw requires under these unique circumstances, but again, we have town councils directive on this. So I think the board, we could say that the board. It would support that variance. And lastly, is the general layout and alignment should blend with the existing topography and landscaping of the area. Again, I don't think that's anything that would be appropriate for a variance, but Pete, do you have any thoughts on that?
No, 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 no contest.
And Woody? No, Mary, any?
No, it's true to me.
No, I, nor do I, nor, well, it's up to you what you would want to apply for, but I think that's.
Yeah, I would think that that, 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 that the driveway as designed and widened.
Meets that intent of the, of the bylaw.
I, I agree, I agree. So I guess the question is for you, how do, how do we proceed? Do you want to go ahead and are you going to apply for the variance or?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah. So I guess, and we, I guess at this point, I, I don't know if. Uh, one thing that would be great is if, I think, I feel fairly comfortable, you know, probably. It seems as if this is something that the zoning board of appeals would, would, would have no issue with. But I would, hopefully we could do is be ready, you know, have the, have the. Decision ready for that meeting, the first meeting after the ZBA.
You mean the, the decision on the, on the.
Common driveway special permit, yeah.
Okay, well, we have to see what the ZBA comes up with.
Yeah, exactly.
Think we've, we've pretty much got all the information we need at this point.
Yeah, I think, I think what I would ask is that Martha, I, I know she had gotten. I don't know if she, she was under the gun to kind of turn around a quick draft decision in a, in a short timeframe, but. That was prior to finding out that we were gonna go before the ZBA, but I guess in the interim between now and, and November. If she could sort of put together that decision, so we'd have something for that meeting would be great.
Yeah, I don't think any of us saw this coming, so.
Yeah.
But just one, one other addition is that, that town council, you know, I did send, send all the. The easement documents and the easement plan over to town council and her. You know, her feeling is to defer her review on that until it's, it's clear exactly what's, you know, what the final decision is going to be regarding the. You know, the design specifications, so that, that part of the review is still pending as well.
Okay.
Good, thanks Martha. Are there any members of the public with any questions?
I'm not seeing any raised hands.
Okay, and you haven't received anything in writing, have you?
No.
Okay.
So Steve, what, what, what date are you aiming for, for the ZBA meeting?
Uh, which, when it's, what is it, November?
It's typically the third Thursday, but I don't know if there's any shift in the schedule because.
I think Chrissy sent me when the date was, if you can bear with me. Think it was, no, some reason November fourth is sticking in my head, I don't know why, but.
Don't we have to do something since advance as well?
No, we have to submit it by October eleventh.
Okay, November fourth is a, is a Saturday, so.
No, it's definitely not that.
Normally they're, they, they meet the third Thursday of the month, which will be November sixteenth.
Okay.
Yeah, so that probably will be the date because that's before Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm asking, because the other factor is even, even if they were to. Make a decision that night, their decision will have to be drafted and then. Approved and signed by the ZBA members and then there's a, an appeal period after that. Yeah, so I'm just kind of trying to think ahead of, if, if this hearing is going to be continued while that process goes. Goes through, what a reasonable, reasonable date would be.
What a great certain would be for it.
I mean, it could always be continued if the, that process isn't finished, but.
Yeah.
Well, let's assume they make a decision on, what did we say, the sixteenth?
Sixteenth.
Yeah, it would take several days and then you got a twenty day appeal period. I hate to say it, but you're really looking into January at this point.
Yeah, can, can we, with, with zoning, can you proceed at risk?
What does that mean?
So you can act, you can actually proceed prior to the appeal period?
You talking about to proceed with construction?
No, well, just proceed with, yeah, or.
I, I, if I may, I think that would be difficult because. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure how the board would feel about approving something which is still in the process.
Alright.
So if, if they, let me just look at the calendar. So if they meet on this, it's the Thursday, so it'd be the sixteenth. And how long's the appeal period?
Twenty days, that starts.
I'm sorry, Martha.
Right, yeah, that starts after the decision has been.
Looks like it's December. December twentieth would be the best bet, right?
I think that will be optimistic.
Yeah, I'm always an optimist.
But the board, the ZBA is going to have to, you know, vote on the, the final written decision and get it signed and then filed with the clerk.
Well, you know what, let, let me offer this, I don't want to sound pessimistic here, but if, there's no guarantee that, that the ZBA is going to approve this. If it's not approved, then maybe December twentieth makes some sense because we could decide where we're going from there. You, if, if, if they do approve it, they, they should have the decision filed by then, although the appeal period wouldn't have run. Does that make sense?
That would make sense, yes.
And if, if we need more time, it can always continue.
Yep. Alright, so, is that okay? I could request to continue this to the twentieth, December twentieth.
You okay with that, Martha?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, at least, at least, you know, we'll try and keep it moving as best we can.
Yep.
So unless there are any other comments or questions, I would entertain a motion to continue this until, what did we say, December twentieth? Meeting at seven fifteen PM via Zoom. Thank you, Woody, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mary. Any discussion? Hearing that, Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. All right, well, thank you and good luck and we'll see you on the twentieth.
Yep.
Steve, bye, Gage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next item is status reports on the master plan update, Martha.
So Kristen and I met last week with Emily, she's in the process of incorporating. You know, factual. Changes and corrections that came from the public comment that was received and also from board members. And anticipates having that done by the end of this week and submitted to the board for review along with a list of the. The items that have been changed, so they should be easy to identify. And again, this is, this will be, you know, factual changes. Not, the board received a lot of opinions on, on various things, but these will be factual changes. We had talked about, originally we had talked about. Providing the board about two weeks to review the master plan after it was completed and presented to the board. With a possibility also of adopting it at, at. At a meeting after that two weeks was done and possibly scheduling a, a special meeting. To do that. Yes, for various, various reasons, it looks like the two meeting. Two potential meeting dates or possible meeting dates could actually be, so if, if it's submitted to us. This Friday, the twenty second. One possibility would be a, a shorter time period, which would be September twenty eighth or else we're looking at October. Twenty fifth, both of which would be non-planning board meetings. And the reason for that is there are a bunch of other meetings going on, we've got, you know, potential presentation to. To the board regarding MBTA communities on the eighteenth, and we've also got a. Housing meeting coming up, which I'll be talking about both of those, so.
So October twenty fifth, that's not our regular meeting.
No, it's a Thursday.
Okay. Well.
And the twenty eighth also, October, no, it was September twenty fifth or October, I'm sorry, October. Sorry, I'm confused, October twenty fifth is not a regular mating date.
Right, and the, the other, the other date. Was. That's September date.
Yes, that's September date, the twenty eighth, which is also not a, that's a Thursday.
So that, that's a week from tomorrow, and that's assuming she has it to us by Friday.
Right, so it's a lot.
It might be a little tight and maybe the twenty fifth, hopefully George might be back with us. So if those are the two options, well, I don't know, Pete, what do you feel?
I'd probably go with October twenty fifth.
Yeah, Woody? Yeah, that seems to be the consensus, I guess. Another few weeks won't make any difference and it'll give us all the time to really review it in depth. Okay.
Okay, that sounds good. We'll let Emily know and because she's been holding those two dates for us, we'll let her know and as soon as we've got it, we'll. Get it to you.
We'll do this, the same time, Martha, seven?
Uh, yes, if that works for all the board members, yes.
Right. Putting it in my calendar, all right, the next item is.
Are you entertaining any questions? Steve Manchin has his hand raised.
If it's a brief one, Steve, this is not a public hearing, so. If, if you have a, if you have a question on the process, sure.
Sure, it's a two parter. One, the comments that the board submitted. On the document available as part of the public record for people like me who are interested to read. And if you could also clarify what is a factual statement versus an opinion statement, that would also be useful. Thank you.
Uh, well, the first part of your question is, it, it's all a public record. Second part of your question, I don't understand.
I heard Martha saying that. The writer was trying to deconvulge what were some of the opinions submitted on the comments on the master plan versus factual. Comments, and I just don't know what the difference is. Since, you know, part of the master plan reflects the will of the community and opinion would seem to be. Having as much weight as a factual comment, so that's the context of my question. Thank you.
Well, I, I think what Martha was saying is she was fact checking, is that my understanding, Martha?
That's correct. You know, in some cases, we might have gotten many different opinions about the same, same thing, so it's a little hard to say which one of those opinions is actually the. The. Actually correct or prevailing one, so it really is a matter of fact checking and also going through and correcting typos and that kind of thing.
Sure, thank you.
Um, all right, next, Martha, you were going to give us an update on the housing production plan?
Yeah, so we've been, Kristen and I have been meeting with the. Economic development and community staff from MVP C who are heading up the housing production plan update. And as you recall, we had a presentation a while back from Lauren Keesling and Kayla Rennie on this. And they have been proceeding to gather more of the demographic data and. For Newbury and all of the other communities, and the big announcement really here is that they are planning, they've engaged. A group called the Consensus Building Institute and are planning to hold a virtual regional housing. Meeting, public engagement session on October twelfth at, from six to seven thirty PM via Zoom. I included that link in the, in the agenda and will also be sending out announcements about that. But the, this meeting will be, it will start with a regional, it's going to be subregional, actually, there'll be about five communities involved. So it'll be a kind of a subregional discussion of. Data and trends that affect all of us and then there'll, it will be broken down into breakout groups to talk specifically about. The data in Newbury, sort of what that means for us and then do some brainstorming on. You know, what we would like to see in, in, for housing in Newbury. So this is, and this will be first of probably two public engagement sessions, the second one will be a couple of months later in person. But this will be a great opportunity for people to really hear about. You know, what's, what's been happening in, with housing in, in the area and to brainstorm on. What, what we would like to see for housing. So again, that's October twelfth from six PM to seven thirty via Zoom. It is, I think it'll be basically the, the regi, the registration will be, it's a red webinar format. So there is a link to register.
And that there are a limited number of attendees or?
No, I think it's open to as many attendees who, who can come and we're really hoping for great participation in this.
Good, great, thank you.
Thank you.
And is there anything further on that before I move on, Martha?
I don't know, Kristen, is there anything you want to add?
No, I would just say. They've broken the regional towns out a little differently, so. Newburyport is actually having a similar regional meeting with, I believe Salisbury, Amesbury. West Newbury, maybe, not sure. Yeah, so that. Yeah, so that meeting is September 28th, so I'm actually gonna attend that just to sort of be a participant and see how it goes, and then our meeting will be on the, for Newbury will be on October 12th, so. Anyway, this is, you know, this will be a good kickstart to some of these conversations that, as I mentioned, the Housing Choice Coalition is, will also be having a regional kickoff meeting later in October, and then we'll have more time for Newbury to just talk with each other as, as, you know, November and the winter goes on. So looking forward to having these conversations and hoping for good participation.
Thanks, Kristen.
Very good, thank you. Moving on then, under old business, Martha, again, you're up. You have the microphone. We're gonna talk about the zoning amendments to the Spring Town, Town Meeting.
Yeah, so first I thought it would be helpful to go through the, the draft schedule for the warrant article submissions. So if it would be helpful for me to share my screen, I can do that.
Yes, please.
So are you able to see that now?
I can see it.
Okay, and is it big enough, or should I make it a little bigger?
I'm fine. Was it anyone else?
Good.
Good. All right, so I'm gonna work backwards here. The annual town meeting date actually is still a little bit up in the air, depending on the venue. They're looking at the possibility of getting, getting a venue that's bigger than the Newbury Elementary School Gymnasium. And it might also have better audio visual capabilities. So the two dates that are being considered, at least as of last Friday are April 23rd or April 30th, so both, both of those are, are Tuesdays. Going backwards from that, the warrant needs to be posted at least seven days prior to the annual town meeting. If there's a special town meeting component, which there often is, that would be two weeks ahead of time. The date when the select board will actually do the final approval and sign the town meeting warrant is still to be determined. So I'm gonna kind of jump to the middle here, number nine. I think the critical date for us, the warrant will effectively close on February 1st. The town administrator would like to have all warrant articles to her by that date. They don't need to be in final form, they can be in draft form. But they need to be you know, be in her hands, at least in, in draft form at that point. Right now, she's anticipating that the finance committee and the select board will review the, will actually review the warrant and approve the articles on the 27th of February. So skipping, so I kind of worked backwards from there and worked back and forth between the planning board meetings and the select board meetings in terms of critical dates. So the process is that the planning board will need to submit this proposed, any proposed zoning amendments to the select board and have a select board vote to refer them back to the planning board for public hearing. So with that September, I'm sorry, that February 1st meeting and the February 27th meeting as critical dates here. I'm suggesting that the board would vote at its January 3rd meeting to submit any zoning amendments to the select board and also vote that date to set the public hearing date, not having the select board refer these back for public hearing. In order to do that, the, the planning board would actually need to get the draft language for the amendments to the select board. They would get, I'm sorry, get the draft language to the select board on the fourth, but would actually need to let the select board know on the second that they would like to have this on the agenda. Since their agenda closes at noon the Tuesday before their Tuesday meetings. Then again, kind of working back and forth, we would target our public hearing for February 7th. In order to do that, the first notice needs to be in the paper at least 14 days prior to that hearing, so that would be on January 22nd. We also need to post a notice in Town Hall and mail a notice to, it's actually EOL, HLC now instead of DHCD, MVPC, and to the planning boards of the budding towns. That can be done anytime reasonably prior to the hearing, but we usually do it the same date that it gets posted in the paper for the first time and in Town Hall. And then the second newspaper notice would be on January 29th. So again, these are, these are target dates right now. Some of the other dates may, may change, but this is kind of based on the best available information at this point. So it's a little bit more aggressive than the schedule that we've usually had. We've, we've often had the public hearing late in February and then voted to recommend the warrant articles early in March, so this pushes, pushes it up a little closer to the beginning of the year. And hopefully that makes sense.
I think so.
Yep. Thanks, Martha.
Okay.
Anyone have any questions to Martha about this? No?
Looks good.
Martha, I'm just curious, what other venues in town are there under consideration? Through school?
Yeah, I think they're talking about, I'm talking to Triton about using the auditorium over there. We've held, we held town meeting there just a couple of times during, during COVID. I don't know what other venues are actually under discussion right now.
Yeah, Triton is the only thing that comes to my mind. You know, it is viable, it's gotta be in town, so.
Yeah, yeah. And something that will hold a fair number of people. So so that's, that's, that's it for the schedule.
Okay.
Shall I move on to status reports for the other?
Unless anyone has any questions, yeah.
No, I was just gonna make a comment. I think the January 9th date is, is helpful just to get the discussion sooner, Martha. So I think that's good.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I think this will be helpful in general. We found, you know, in the past, sometimes it's a scramble to actually get the, the warrant language finalized, and it's, you know, it, it makes it difficult all around, so I think this will be helpful.
Okay.
All right. Then regarding the MBTA communities, multifamily zoning. I mean, this, this will probably be, you know, the major one on, on the warrant. As we've discussed previously, we don't need to be in compliance with 3A, which is how this zoning is being referred to. We don't need to be in compliance in December, until December of 2025. But when we discuss this, we.
By compliance, you mean having adopted the bylaw?
Having an adopted bylaw, right. That's also been approved by HLC.
Now, does, does that, the approval, does that happen before or after the town meeting action?
So there's actually, there is a pre-approval process which opens 90 days, or, or I'll put it this way, HLC has 90 days once it's submitted to them for pre-approval. And they are, they, they held office hours yesterday, so that's how I know some, some of this information. They are going to be prioritizing those communities that actually need to be in compliance by the end of next year. But we'll also be reviewing draft bylaws from other communities as well, so we can go through the pre-approval process. Ideally, that would happen before our draft language is finalized. It's not absolutely required. Then after it is, if it's adopted at town meeting, it will go to HLC for formal approval. And if they, if they approve it, if it's sent to them before the attorney general's approval comes through, they will approve it if, you know, if they find it's approvable, contingent on attorney general approval. So they're, they're gonna be kind of two entities that are reviewing this. So there's a pre-approval, and that will be helpful if, if the timing allows for that. Just if so, if there are any, you know, significant issues, we can address those before they go to town meeting.
And if the AG should approve and HLC doesn't approve, what? What happens then?
That's a good question. I actually asked that yesterday, this office hours thing, you know, what is the interface between the HLC approval and the AG's office approval? So we talked about HLC approving first, but didn't talk about what might happen in the reverse. So so just as a brief update reminder on, on a few things, we are considered an adjacent small town. Our requirement is 154 units of multifamily housing allowed by right at a density of 15 units per acre. We are not required, unlike some of the other communities that have, actually have, you know, transit-like train stations in, in their community, we're not bound to have it within that half-mile radius of the train station. We can put it any place in town that we feel is appropriate. There are 69 acres of developable station area that HLC has identified, but we're not required to put it in that area. That said, we've been working with MVPC and their staff again using a compliance tool that HLC has developed in which we can identify certain areas or parcels and plug those into this tool, and there are certain parameters that are set up including, or that get input, including, you know, setbacks, building height or number of stories, that kind of thing that will then give us for any selected parcel or district will give us what the number of units as well as units per acre could be supported in that, on that parcel or in that district. And, you know, they've emphasized many times that this is not actually a build-out analysis, it's just what could be done using this particular tool.
And as you, you've often said in the past, we don't know, we don't have to build anything, we simply have to make the the zoning district available for it.
Right, right. So that's correct. So Kristen and I have been working with them. We went through a first pass of identifying a number of parcels in primarily the Business and Light Industrial District and also in the Commercial Highway and Commercial Highway A District. And have now narrowed it down to a few districts that seem like they might be appropriate for this and are working back and forth with the compliance tool. And MVPC also has a viewer in which you can call up areas that, that, that HLC has excluded because they're, you know, they're wetlands or you know, other, other kinds of constrained areas, not developable. So we're in the process of kind of getting, getting to a point where we're ready to have a conversation with the board about that. MVPC has identified October 8, the board's October 18th as a date to actually come and make a presentation to the board and have a discussion about the, the areas and parcels that we've identified. So one thing we wanted to do tonight is to check with you all to see if that seems like an appropriate time to do that.
That's, that's a regular meeting night, I think.
That is, yes, that is a regular meeting.
I don't, I don't see why not. Anyone else have any thoughts on that? No? Did we lose Mary?
Um. Yeah, she seems to have stepped away for a second.
Unless anyone has any questions on this, Martha, I guess we can continue on.
Okay. So Kristen, is there anything you want to add about the MBTA communities?
Nope. It's, it's, I'm looking forward to bringing it to the board and, and getting other input on it. It's, it's an interesting process, and I think it's great to just think about the opportunities, you know. What are the opportunities that Newbury has to encourage multifamily housing in places that we, you know, that our residents and others need it? And where it makes sense for the community. So I'm looking forward to having that discussion with all of you.
Good.
A couple of ones, other ones, potential zoning amendments that we had talked about are inclusionary zoning and an expansion of our wireless communications district. We're in the process of looking at potential inclusionary zoning language, and I think we'll have to have a discussion again about, you know, does it really make, make sense to go forward with this at the same time, or does it make sense to get the MBTA communities in place? There are some provisions. We're just starting to review the model bylaw for MBTA communities right now. There are some provisions in there for up to 10% affordable housing, actually up to 20%, but that has more a little bit more homework to do. So that may be enough. And we should be able to talk about that a little bit more in more detail on the 18th, I think.
Good.
And I know that, that Larry's working on a draft for the inclusionary zoning. And wireless communications, there are a couple of areas that we had identified. And again, as I mentioned last time, Verizon is actually actively looking for some locations in town. So I don't think we've moved this forward yet, but we can, you know, start taking a look at those.
Very good. Kristen, anything to add?
Quick question. Sorry, Larry.
Oh, go ahead, Pete.
A quick question, Martha. Has Verizon been reaching out to indicate any types of technologies that might be looking to put into place? Have they indicated what their needs are?
The only one they discussed is actually, I mean, they're trying to get coverage in the, the Old Town area that we talked about with David Maxon. You know, sort of the, the Black Duck Circle area and specifically interested in the DPW site on High Road. When I talked with the Verizon representative, she indicated that they are Verizon is particularly, you know, they're really looking at sort of the current technology of putting a tower there with antenna. You know, I asked whether doing some of the more, you know, small cell technology or something would, would provide what they need. And at the ti, right now, that doesn't seem to be the case.
Same lines, would there be other carriers that would also be participating in this discussion, or just, is it just a singular carrier?
I believe, I don't know this for a fact, I, I believe that they're potentially looking at, you know, having the tower be available for other carriers.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions before we move on? All right, I guess then we can turn to our planning board minutes from August 16th. Has everyone had an opportunity to review those?
Yes.
Yes.
I have.
I see you nodding your head. I, I have, Woody?
Yes.
Does anyone have any, any suggestions for amendments to the minutes as presented? We're hearing none. Would anyone care to move to approve the minutes of the August 16th, 2023 meeting as presented?
So moved.
All right, thank you. Woody, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mary. Any discussion? Hearing none. Pete, how do you vote?
Yes, please.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes, and thank you, Kristen. You did a very good job.
She did, and I vote yes as well. Okay, that is the end of our agenda, folks. Anything else before we adjourn? Okay, then, would anyone care to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll help you with that, Larry.
Thank you, Pete. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mary, any discussion? Hearing none. Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote? Woody, how do you vote?
Yes, and good night, everyone.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes, and good night, thank you all.
And I vote yes as well, and thank you, I thanks, everyone, and, um, see you next time.